I would like to call the October 22nd, 2019 School Committee Meeting to order. Can we please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
So we have double-checked to make sure that we are working 100% tonight. Let's see, please silence all cellphones for the duration of the meeting. If anyone needs to have any sidebar conversation, I would just ask that you please step outside. Alright, otherwise, can we have approval of the minutes, payroll, and warrants? Can I have a vote to approve the minutes of September 24th, 2019?
Motion.
Second? All those in favor? Alright, and can I have a vote to approve our payroll and warrants?
Motion.
Second.
All those in favor? Okay, thank you very much. Alright, well, thank you everyone for showing tonight. So I am going to read our normal statement before prior to delegation, and then I will open it up to the floor. So, prior to delegation, I would like to remind the audience that our school committee meetings, which are held in public, are not public meetings and are here to conduct school committee business. However, we do have a public comment policy that allows for individuals to address the committee through the chair. You will have up to three minutes to speak, to discuss topics that are listed on the agenda. This is not a forum for the committee to hear personal complaints of the school personnel, and we would encourage you to go through the proper channels with administration. Alright, thank you for that. Is there anyone that would like to speak to the committee tonight? No? Okay, sure. Just please state your name when you get to the podium. Oh, Sarah, would you time us?
My name is Jolene DaSilva. I'm a teacher here. I'm a president of a graduate from here, and I could go on and on and on. I wanted to speak today just because I deeply about here. And, I know, I need a stool. And I don't know, I don't know if my voice matters, but I did want to speak, and I felt like I needed to say something. As a school, we've been told that our goal is 80%, be meeting 80%. And I would like it to be 100%. I think all our kids have... I don't always think the MCAS is the way to go. Because the way, every student has an opportunity in this world to do something, and MCAS only gives them that one leap. You know, unfortunately, that's what we have to do. We have to go by the end. However, while this is an admirable goal, and we all want to achieve it, here, everybody wants that, we don't have the resource. And, I'm not sure if you're aware of the resources that we're... I'm one person. Everybody is trying to do their best. I give 100% leave here as we all do. And, in support in our classrooms, some of the things that were lacking at this point in the school year, we're being asked to do so much more this year, so much less. And every year, I know it's the, I understand the money, I live in the town, I got that. But, we have no libraries. I just asked my little girl next door, "Have you been able to get a book?" And she said, "Oh, we're gonna get to go at the end of the year." How sad is that? You know, that's not good. We don't have it here either. All these... We've lost two SED teachers, two power professionals. Our access to technology at some grade levels has been reduced 50 to 75% at the moment. We've eliminated a math teacher at the 7th and 8th grade level. 57% 7th grade students are reading below a 6th grade level. I've asked for a reading specialist years. I can only do so much. If they're not reading at grade level, how can they pass? I try. The growth is there. I'm giving them something, but I can't do it alone. Have no interventionalists. Our digital resources, ELA this year, they weren't renewed, and that wasn't just ELA. But I can only see... I came in, this year I want to get going, and nothing's there for me. So I know this is not just me, I know it's me and my colleagues.
Just so you know, the three minutes is up, but I'll let you finish your speech. If it's not that long.
I just want to do my best, and I know everybody here does, but we don't have everything in place that we need.
Thank you.
Thank you, I appreciate your comments.
Hello, everybody. I'm RC Galen. As a parent of two children who are attending a cushion at school, I'm really concerned with... My youngest child has always struggled in school, but because of the amazing support he received in the past, he's successful and actually enjoyed school, which is big. Unfortunately, there's a difference. I found out that half of the SED department was in half due to budget cuts. I felt the general fear that my son's success story would change. Fortunately, I was not wrong. Already in mid-October, I've seen a difference in his quality of education due to the lack of support. Though his teachers are constantly trying their best, it's unrealistic to expect a regular education teacher to take on the full supportive role of special education. We applaud our MCAS scores from last spring when it was a four-point loss, but yet we have seemed to forget about the support for the best... And has been coming home frustrated and continuously with a sense of feeling lost. Question to the school committee: Are we really supporting our students? Are we ensuring the best education for all students this year with less teachers? Here, I would say no. And also, as a fellow educator, I would say that cutting the staff that directly interacts with the students every day challenges the philosophy of education. What are we doing to our children? How have we come to think this? I also want to stand here in front of the school committee in support of our teachers and help be their voice. I've been teaching for 14 years and have the, and had the absolute privilege of being a teacher here at Ford Middle School for a couple of years. This was actually my dream job. I grew up in a cushionet, and I attended these schools. I've been opportunely working in communities that gave so much to me. I worked with the best staff, and I was proud to be part of our school district. Teachers I worked with were passionate. I was happy to be... Unfortunately, I had to leave Ford Middle School. And it wasn't because I didn't love my job, it wasn't because I didn't feel that my coworkers didn't share the same philosophy as I did as an educator. What it truly came down to was the poor benefits that our district... I couldn't realistically provide for a family of two children with the benefits and salary that are provided in our country. So I had to move on. And so here is my next question to the school committee. What are we doing to ensure that you are keeping the dedicated and passionate teachers in our district? What are you doing to keep the best of the teachers? I want the lowest-paid teachers in the state. What does that say about our town? What does that say about how valuable we think education is here in the cushionet? Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. Anyone else? Okay, would anyone else like to speak? Okay, so thank you very much. I do hope that you'll bring some of your concerns over to administration, make sure that you're openly discussing it with them. I will close, officially close the public comment portion of the meeting, so that's officially closed. I think we just, you know, I wrote down a few things personally, and I know on behalf of the committee, we've discussed these, and I, I just want to say that the parties have been negotiating, you know, for approximately 10 months now. During negotiations, we have reached agreements on, on multiple proposals that have been done on both sides. So that's a positive thing. There are some still things, a handful of issues that we need to resolve, and we will be working with a mediator to settle that. So, you know, we're hopeful, we, we want an agreement. We, you know, love our staff, we value and we do respect our staff. You know, but there's just a few things that we, we have to finish up. So, we're hopeful that that will get done quickly and as fast as possible. Does anybody else have anything else that they'd like to say, or we're kind of all under the agreement on that? Alright, so hopefully, things will end, end pretty soon. So I do hope that you'll stay, we have a pretty full agenda tonight. I hope that you'll stay and listen to what we do at our... This is great. One thing I love about coming together to discuss issues is that it actually gets people here to listen to our agendas and to listen to what we do at our meetings. So thank you for being here, and I, I hope you'll, you'll stay as much, as long as you can. Okay. So, starting off, for old business, we do have our school committee policies that we've reviewed. We've been going through our, our policy sections, and we, we've been given Sections I and J. So, if anybody has any questions, we can listen to them now. If not, then I would like to do a, a vote on second reading for Sections I and J. Do you have a second?
Second.
Alright, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, okay, thank you very much. Yes? Approved in form. Do I have a motion to approve Sections I and J in form?
Motion to approve in form.
Okay, second?
Second.
Alright, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, okay, thank you, Dr. Bailey. Alright, so new business superintendent's report, Dr. Bailey, Personnel Matters.
You can see in your packet, since the last time we met, we have hired two additional people where we had openings. We still have the Director of Curriculum and Instruction and Assessment open. Still quite a bit of work in that area that we are using paying consultants to do, as well as everybody who works in the district pitching in. That work still needs to get done, and we're looking for the right person. I also want to take a moment to publicly introduce my new administrative assistant. Kelly Benavides is joining us tonight. Her first day was yesterday. So we really appreciate you joining our team. And I want to take a moment also to thank Joan Boucher, who really stepped into the district at a very difficult time, when, you know, unfortunately, my secretary passed away. And she came in, and she's been a wealth of knowledge and really helped keep things together in the district. I know she's a snowbird, so she'll be leaving very shortly, but we do appreciate everything that you've done for us, Joan, so thank you so much.
Thank you, Joan. District Curriculum Audit?
Yep. So, last meeting, we presented our MCAS scores, and as discussed, you know, our student achievement continues to look steady. 57%, 54%, and 47% of our students are either meeting or exceeding expectations in ELA, Math, and Science, all above the state average. But what we're focused on is the other 50%. So we want to work as a collective organization. We keep talking about two schools, one district, and that's a very big focus right now in the district. And we really need to embody that vision as one district. So you'll hear that a lot. And with this collective effort, the hope is that we will proudly be able to look at each parent in the eye and say that we're doing everything, each parent, everything we can in our power to ensure success for all students. So that is very important to us. So as a result of that, we want to, one of my goals that I'll get into in a few minutes is conducting a curriculum audit within the district at both schools. And what I've done is, I've outlined a timetable, and the curriculum audit will consist of looking at our assessments, you know, how they're addressing the content areas, Math, ELA, and Science, but also are they capturing the level of rigor to which students are being held accountable in terms of the MCAS testing? You know, those things are testing critical thinking skills, problem-solving, and communication. So we want to make sure that we are doing that deep learning. The commissioner was in recently, and he touched upon that deep learning that we're really focused on across the state. We want to make sure across all content areas that we are focused on that. So this curriculum audit is to really, to assess the degree to which the assessments and the curricula of the cushionet public schools are aligned, to meet the expectations put forth with the mass frameworks, and also the rigor, as I just talked about. We will measure the degree of alignment among MCAS, Summit of Assessments, Curriculum Maps, Curriculum Resources, and Classroom Practice. We know that there's a lot of areas right now that are lacking, and I think one of the teachers mentioned that tonight. We want to be very clear and specific through this audit, what it is that's lacking, and what the priority is moving forward. So this is, this is quite an undertaking, it's one of my goals. But if you look at the work plan, we, we want to start first with Ford Middle School, and we'll start with Math and the Grade Eight Algebra Review, then we'll go into Math. So, you know, by the end of this month, we're hoping to wrap up the Algebra. But by February, we will be having a report on the findings at Ford Middle School and recommendations. And then right after that, we will go into all of the content areas, and you can see they're outlined in the document that you have, the AES. And then, in June, at the June School Committee, we will have a report for the findings and recommendations at the elementary school. So this will be a year-long undertaking. We will have consultants working with us. Dr. Roy would be one person. Our teachers, our administrators will be our coach, our academic coach will be pitching in, but we've got to get this work done so we can get it right and prioritize the curriculum needs in the district. As far as, I just wanted to give you a little update as far as the Algebra. We've been talking about that the last couple of meetings. So the, my understanding is the resources have been ordered, they have arrived, and the next step is that the Grade Eight teacher is beginning to incorporate those resources into the curriculum. Dr. Roy, again, in the absence of a Director of Curriculum, is going to be creating a scope and sequence for the year, and she will be meeting with the math teacher regularly to implement, as well as the school administration here at the middle school. We will also be connecting with Hastings Middle School regarding the criteria for students to get into those advanced math classes at Fairhaven High School. As you know, it's no secret that our students have not been able to get into the school. And you know, going back to this curriculum audit, we, I hear a lot of anecdotal stories from parents that, you know, "My, my child did so well at Ford Middle School, they get to high school," excuse me, "they get to high school, and they're not doing well." So those are stories, those are anecdotal stories. What we're going to do with this audit is really get deep here in a cushionet with the curriculum and see our strengths and opportunities for growth. So, we want to find out, we want to make sure that our students from a cushionet have the same opportunities that all students have to take those advanced classes. We know certainly not every child will take advanced classes, but we have students who I believe are, you know, we have to prepare them to take those classes if that's what they choose to do. So, do, does anybody have any questions about that?
I have one question. So, with the negotiations going on right now between the APA and the district, is any of this going to be in effect, or does it have to be in? I'm just wondering, does this contract have anything to do with the goals that we're trying to set?
Negotiations.
With negotiations?
Process up.
This is not including any of that.
This is the work.
This is what has to get done.
This is the work that we want to do, we want to see the resources that we need, we want to make sure that we're supporting our teachers with what they need. We want to prioritize resources in terms of, you know, if we have so much in the pot of money, what should we adopt first for curriculum adoptions, for example? So, that's where we're going with that. And we've started some of that work last year. We had teachers at the middle school in groups piloting some different programs. This will be a much deeper dive into that work, you know, with a different lens, and it will be an official report in terms of next steps and recommendations at both schools. And again, with that heavy focus on, we're two schools, one district, how can we have, work on that vision together collectively?
Thank you.
Anyone have anything else on that? Great, exciting, looking forward to seeing that. Okay. Old Colony Video Project.
I just wanted to let the committee know that we are working in a partnership with Old Colony High School students in the video production shop, and when they're in their shop classes, they come over once a week. So it's once a week, for an hour every two weeks, and then they have two weeks back in class. But they, if you hear anything that there's cameras in the schools, it's true. They're taking, you know, probably some nice footage of our students and teachers and all the great things that people are doing in the district, and I welcome that. We have a brand-new TV studio, and I believe they're well-versed on that equipment. They will be working with our media club. They've invited our media club from the middle school to visit their program at Old Colony. And I will say, I mean, there's a, there's a good amount of cushionet students in the group that comes to our schools, so it's about six or seven kids in each group, with an adult from Old Colony. They wear their shirts, their lanyards, they started today, but I know they're quite excited about it. And I just wanted to let you know that that's what we're doing, and we know that we have a couple of students, a few students in the district who can't be videotaped, and we are well-aware of that, and we will work with that. But, you know, the goal is for them to really be as unobtrusive as possible while they're in the school. They're only here for an hour, and, and you have the dates listed there in your packet. But I just wanted to let you know that we're working closely on a project with Old Colony.
Do you have any questions? Alright, thank you. Alright, Superintendent's Goals.
The first sheet you have is a memo, just outlining my goals. And the second sheet is my self-assessment form, which talks about where I am as far as building my capacity as a leader, as well as where the district is at in terms of, you know, data and things like that. The, the sheet that I want to focus on are the, the sheet that looks like this, Educators' Goals template, okay? Used this sheet last year. So, the first goal talks about that curriculum audit, that's the focus there. For the last two years, we've been hovering at 74% in the district, as identified by DESI as substantial progress towards the targets. We're missing it by 1%. So we'd love to get, we want at least 75% or graders of our students meeting and exceeding targets as a district. So that 74% is a district combined. And it's very important that we look at things as a district, because we're all working together to prepare our students for college and career readiness. And, you know, we hear the stories of parents who, I just heard one about, you know, the child doesn't feel ready in high school. We, we don't want to hear stories like that. And we want to hear, and we have a lot of successful stories too, but we want to hear that they feel challenged, they're able to take those advanced classes. That's the goal. So as you can see in that, under the first goal, I have, you know, listed a bunch of strategies, very similar to the things that we did last year, facilitating the meetings with the leaders in the district, going on learning walks. And again, really focusing with Dr. Roy on that curriculum audit, that will be a huge focus for that one this year. And we're also in the process of updating our strategic plan, the three-year plan. What I really would like to do, and we've already started the work, is get it down to one page, so that all the teachers have it, all the administrators have it. Sometimes when the document is just too big, it's just, it sits on a shelf, it's a working document, but if we can just have a one-page or two-page sheet on our strategies, then I feel like that will be the focus. So we're working on that, get it more manageable for everyone versus a large document moving forward. The second goal is very similar as last year. It's my second year in the NSIP program, so just, you know, building my capacity as an effective leader and, and really taking everything I can from that program. And I, I do want to say that I've been really satisfied with the program. I have a coach once a month, I go off to conferences and meetings, but it's been very valuable, and I know the district pays for that, but I really feel like it's something that we should continue to do, obviously. It's a three-year program, but there's a lot of key takeaways. I never, ever feel like it's been a waste of time, it's always been pretty productive. So, I'm going to continue that this year. The third one talks about, you hear about SEL, the Social Emotional Learning in the district, and, you know, to sum it up, I, I'm big on relationships in the district, and really having good relationships between students and administrators and teachers. We want to identify a consistent approach regarding teaming, systems in the district, so that we can create thriving social and emotional environments for our kids across the district. So for example, if the elementary students are using responsive classroom, then they come to the middle school and they, they have to learn PBIS, and those are both good programs, but how can we make them align a little bit more so that when students cross the parking lot, they don't have to learn new things? So, what we've started to do is get our staff together, working together as one district, and not so separate. So, that goal talks a lot about that, as far as the SEL stuff, and, and it boils down to just having really good, strong relationships. And then the last goal is to strengthen the human resources systems and procedures within the district. You know that we've created a new job description for the assistant, my assistant, who Kelly Benavides comes to us with a very strong background in human resources, and having a small district like this, we don't have the budget to have a separate department, but that work still needs to be done. So we want to really make sure that our hiring and recruiting practices are the way they should be, and we've been working at training all of the leaders on, you know, how do you check references? And it should be of supervisors, you know, things like that. So, that fourth goal discusses that. And then, as you can see on all of them, it lists the strategies of, you know, all of my steps that I'll be doing. I don't know if anybody has any questions, but if everyone is okay with it, it is something that we would need to vote on.
So, before we go into a vote, does anybody have any questions?
No.
No, okay. So can I have a motion to approve Dr. Paula Bailey's Superintendent Goals as presented?
Motion.
A second? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Okay, thank you.
I've also included the rubric in there, and I'll just keep including on the Google Drive, the forums and things, just like last year. The next thing is a remote participation policy. This is something that was forwarded to us by the town, and this basically, if this is something that we want to do as a committee, this would have to be voted in as it is. This is not something we edit or tweak or make our own. This is something that the Select Board has voted already to accept on their end, and they're putting it out to all board and committee members to see if this is something we want to do. So it's basically to allow participation in meetings if people need to be absent. So, as you can see, the sheets that I have for you, it talks about what the policy looks like. You know, you still need a quorum, but basically with the technology that we have nowadays, if it's something that the committee feels, you know, whether it's a personal illness, somebody has a personal disability that they couldn't physically be here, they could be spiked in, but I believe it has to have proper audio and things like that. If there was some type of an emergency, there, where they were not supposed to, were not able to be here, military service, or geographic distance. So I'm not going to read it to you, I sent it to you in your packets, but I just want to say that it has to be voted in form exactly as is if it's something this committee approves of.
So how does the committee feel about it?
Does that have to be approved annually, or is it just a one-time?
I don't know. That's something I could find out.
I mean, I have to say, I can be persuaded either way, I think, with, with input from all of you. For me, I mean, we only meet, you know, once a month. For me, I mean, we only meet, you know, once a month. I know we get, I'm getting confused, we have workshops and policy meetings, so I'm here more than once a month, but, um, so I don't know. I mean, we haven't really had a problem with individuals not being able to make it, and I do, I mean, but it is the new times, and if that's what we want to do is have a remote policy, I'm fine either way, but I'm also fine with not adopting it and leaving things as is. We just had, being here where we think we're in a controlled environment, we just had an issue last week where we had an issue with our recording. So I don't know. I have some concerns, maybe we'd want to make sure that if we do decide to do this way, that we would have to make sure that the criteria is met in order to remotely participate. But that's just my take. So personally, I would lean towards not voting on it, but I'm open to suggestions.
I, I do have some questions about it that maybe we can just send an email asking, for example, you know, sub, sub meetings that we have.
Yep.
You know, does it have to be videoed now? We don't have video usually on the subcommittees.
No, I don't believe that's what it's for.
Do we have to though if we're calling in?
Right, if somebody wanted to call in and we had this policy in place, they would be able to remotely participate in the meeting. It's not for audience members, it is for committee members who, again, I listed some emergencies, illness, things like that. They could be Skyped in and participate in the meeting, and it would count as part of the forum.
That's it, though? We don't have to have an extra stipulation that it has to be recorded for?
Nope, it's exactly as it states.
But I would imagine you need to be able to be heard.
Well, yes, and then that's, that's in the policy, yep.
Right. It says that, it does say video technology, though. That persons have to be present, have to be visible.
Clearly visible.
So, I mean, with the right technology, I don't see why, I mean, I do remote meetings all the time, my job, but you've got to have the right technology in place. So I think if, if you do, which it seems, I mean, the school would have to, would the school provide us that technology, members that technology if they weren't equipped with their own?
Yeah, I mean, we've done interviews via Skype. We have the technology available to do it. Obviously, you would need the technology on your end in terms of a camera because you have to be visible. Right, right.
I mean, I don't see why it would be an issue, but I, I will go with the committee's on this if we want to think about it more.
Any other?
What do you think?
No, if we want, we can table it and give it some more, more time to decide, right? It doesn't have, there's not a deadline to the town as when we get back to them regarding it.
But if you have specific questions, certainly email me, and I'm more than happy to get back to you. I'll let the town know. But I just want to point out too, the cost of the connection shall be on the person who's typing in, or, you know, it's not the responsibility of the town or the board.
That's a great point.
If there's any costs associated.
Yeah, at this point, we don't want to, we don't want anything that's going to, is any additional funds.
I think it's, it would be in place should some, some emergency happen where one member couldn't come, and you'd say, you know, "I'd like to participate in the meeting, I'm in Vermont." You cannot participate unless this policy is in place.
And really, it's up to the individual member to make sure that they've got the technology in place on their end.
Correct.
To make sure that we can participate for the policy.
And it would be noted in the minutes?
The remote.
Yep. I'm fine with it. I mean, I don't have any issues as long as we follow the rules for this.
What do you guys think?
I'm fine if everyone else is okay with it. I mean, I don't see an issue.
Okay, so we'll put it to vote, since we had some good discussion. All right. So do I have a motion to approve the remote participation policy as presented by the Board of Select to the school committee?
Motion.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, it passes.
Thank you.
All right.
Next, in the past, I believe that the committee has been approving student handbook. I'm not so sure that we've been approving staff handbook. So I want to make sure that we do that, because that is in our policy. So in your packets tonight, I have the Acushnet Elementary School Handbook, Teacher Handbook, as well as the Ford Middle School Handbook. And I would just like first to call the elementary principal, Mrs. Beck, to the podium if she could just review or highlight the teacher handbook.
Good evening and thank you. In front of you is the handbook. We have a forty-one-page document that has our standard operating procedures. How we start today. We included this year electronic forms for signing out of the building. Also included our schedules. The addendums include a master schedule, the DESI, Department of Early, of Elementary Secondary Education Evaluation Process. So the handbook itself is forty-one pages. With the addendums, it's quite lengthy. So what we'll do is, we have presented it to teachers. Tonight, if you approve of it, we will present it again to teachers with the updates and have them sign again the acknowledgement form that they've received, the practices, policies of operating at the elementary level. Teachers will re-sign another acknowledgement. Do you have any questions on the handbook?
Mike, I have a similar question to Sarah's about just with being in negotiations. Would, might that change things in the handbook at all?
More procedure, procedures in the handbook? And it should align with the contract, so I don't, it, it's really a guide for people to follow, and obviously, no matter what, the contract would take precedence.
Yeah.
But the way that the elementary school has it outlined, it's alphabetical, it's supposed to be helpful for the teachers should they need to look something up, like I'm looking at this, you know, classroom parties. So what, what's the procedure for a classroom party? On page ten.
Did anybody else have any questions? No, I thought it was very detailed. Thank you very much, very informational. So can I have a vote to approve the Acushnet Elementary School Teacher, so my source says Teacher Handbook as presented?
Motion.
Second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right.
And now we'd like to present the Ford Middle School Teacher Handbook. If I could ask Mrs. Sylvia to the podium.
Thank you. The handbook changes every year, the names, phone numbers, date, the grading calendar, when progress reports, when four, five, committee meeting date. Question, this goes by last, or the number of last meetings. So that is the nineteen-twenty schedule wrote. Lunches do have to be updated, change in the lunch. Those are the things that change.
Is, is, excuse me, is the lunches updated in this current copy? Okay, so I don't want, I'm not comfortable voting on that tonight if it's not how it needs to be. So once all the updates are made, if you could resubmit that, and then we can do it at our next meeting for the Ford Middle School booklet.
No? Any, yeah, thanks.
Thank you, Mrs. Sylvia.
All right.
Okay.
School committee.
So I'm pleased that the Policy Subcommittee has really been meeting consistently since, for several months now, anyway. And Sections K and L were the last sections, and that will be a first reading tonight. And then the plan for the Subcommittee is to go through the policies one more time and recommend any changes. We've been working very closely with Jim Hardy from MASC. And then once the committee approves the entire, you approved them in form by sections, once that entire packet is approved, all of those policies will be available online, and we will have a link on our website. And for example, if we come to the committee and make a change in policy, the idea is within forty-eight hours that will be updated on the website. So it, you know, it's a very good system compared to what existed in the past. But tonight, we're just looking for a first reading for K and L, and that is also in your
Does anyone have any questions about even on first reading? I think MASC has been helpful, and it's, it's great, and they will notify the district if there's been any changes at the state level. So if there's a new law that gets put into place or something changes at the district level, they will notify the, the district, and then we can just update. The school committee can then review it on first reading again, and then adopt if we feel we have questions. So the great, MASC has been a great resource for this. Okay, so next, Formation of Facilities Subcommittee.
Well, with, with the Policy Subcommittee, we've been meeting very consistently, and I don't think the need will be there to meet as often. My thought would be at this time to formulate a Facilities Subcommittee based on, you know, so that the committee can feel like they're updated on things that are going on in the district in terms of facilities, operations. But I'm just putting it out there that, you know, it may be time to do something like that so that we can have a committee addressing any concerns that, you know, you may have.
Personally, I think it's a, a great idea when Dr. Bailey and I were discussing it, and, and she brought it up to me, I thought that I think that would be great. I know we have a lot going on with the roof. I know we've talked about playgrounds, I know we've talked about soccer fields, and it's really hard to keep up sometimes, and there's a lot of stuff going on at meetings. So this might allow things to get done a little faster behind the scenes, and then have representatives come to the committee as a whole and say, "This is where we're at." And of course, we would still vote on any contracts or any big things such as that soccer, how much we've been working on the fields.
And I would recommend two members, if you're interested in doing that. And I would also recommend on our side, having our maintenance director, as well as the business manager, myself, be a part of that subcommittee.
Agreed. So I would like to ask two members, and personally, I did think of Dave and Sarah. I know the two of you are great at bringing issues, you know, together. I don't want to put you on the spot necessarily, but I kind of sort of did. But if you're interested, I, I would, I would like the two of you, I think you'd be a great representation. But if you don't want to do it, I, I understand. I mean, I know you, I know.
I'm in.
Life is busy. You're doing, excellent. Okay, thank you. Thank you both very much, we appreciate it. You're both going to represent as well. All right, so I will take an official, can I have a motion to vote in Sarah and Dave onto the Facilities Subcommittee? And do an official formation of one.
Make a motion.
All right. Good second? All right. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you very much.
The next thing is the Site Access Agreement that we've been talking about regarding the fields. So the edits are in red for the agreement, so you can see where the changes have been made. I think mostly we've been talking about, you know, who's going to do the work as far as maintaining those fields. So there is some language in this agreement that we certainly can go through. Then in your packets, I als, we also on number fifteen talked about the term of the agreement, and we can certainly look at the specifics of that in terms of when we want it to begin and terminate. And then I also provided you with a clean copy, just so you have both copies, but the copy you really want to be focused on is the copy with, in red with the edits, so that you can see the changes that were made. This may not be something that you, you may not be prepared to vote on this, this minute, but I do think we need to move this along soon. So that we can figure out who's doing, maintaining the field. And the responsibility falls on who? So we need to get that in place.
And we have our next meeting on Tuesday, November nineteenth. All right, so is everyone okay with taking from now until November nineteenth to really fine-tooth comb, go through the agreement, get in touch with Dr. Bailey or Kristen if you have any questions? And then be, hopefully be prepared to vote on it at our next meeting? Or work?
This may also want to, you may want to put it through if the Facilities Subcommittee can meet prior to that date. They may want to look at this a little more thoroughly and then present at the next meeting, if you can do that.
As well as the soccer subcommittee.
Oh, okay.
Craig and I should meet with Dave.
Yeah.
Three of us should get together.
So that committee should also be looking at this as well.
Yeah.
That would be great.
So both, yeah?
Okay.
Okay. All right. And next, we have a Student Services update from Ms. Bettencourt, our Director of Student Services. She will be talking about her role in the district, and it really does encompass much more than just special education. There's been a lot of miscommunication about cuts and things like that. So she's going to clarify today where the department is at and what's going on in terms of moving forward with staffing and things like that.
You'll have to bear with us, Chris, and my clicker. So I was asked by Dr. Bailey just to give an update of where we are with Student Services. I know the position was changed, entitled, and some things added, so I just wanted to make sure that we brought everybody up to speed on what's been happening, what the department looks like, and kind of my vision for where we're going to next with position resources. So I'm not going to read all through these, but I did list roles and responsibilities right now that come with my title. Generally, you know, oversight of the Special Ed Department, all the IEP process, making sure there's equitable services for all students, supervising the positions that fall under the Director of Services position. I've also started to do quite a bit of partnership with the area high schools, we'll talk about that a little further on. So what I did was break out elementary and middle school to just highlight what we have for programming right now. So at Acushnet Elementary, we have integrated preschools, we have full inclusion programming throughout the elementary, which means that in all grade levels, there's inclusion for all students. So any kids on IEPs are included within the regular ed program. We have resource classrooms, and those are for students that, being in the general ed setting throughout the entire day, may not be aligned with their services. So we do have resource availability. We have related services, OTT speech. We have part-time, Mrs. Roy, who's also a speech therapist, part of her time, she does BBA, which you mentioned. We have guidance counselors at the elementary school, and a school-based counselor for family services. And again, that's available to families if they need criteria for that. At Ford, very similar programming, we have the inclusion program, we have resource classrooms. We do have a therapeutic learning classroom at Ford, which is for kids who, again, the general ed classroom may not suit their needs. So it's a more small setting where there's different approaches to, they're different. We have, again, those same related services, paraprofessional support. We do have school adjustment counselors at the middle school, and I'm happy to say we just added a second school adjustment counselor here to Ford, which really felt like a priority. We, again, have guidance, autism support. So partnership with Behaven High School, I felt it really important, even though students, our high school students are not with us every day, that we really have a strong relationship with the high school. They're still our students, I still feel responsible to monitor what's happening with them. So I've actually spent beginning of my first few months out at all three of the high schools, meeting with the Special Ed Department, sitting in on IEP for our. So Behaven specifically, we've started the conversation about how can we share resources? How can we ensure that there's some joint programming for our kids to have opportunities at Behaven that they don't? Special Ed students, again, I don't know that we had a great two-way communication around our Special Ed students. Partnership with New Bedford High, again, that ongoing consultation. We do have students with more of a high need attending New Bedford High, so I've spent a lot of time at meetings, looking at scheduling with the high school staff, making sure that there's opportunities for unique support that our kids may have. Those are our kids in more of our behavior-based therapy programs that are attending New Bedford High. Again, attending IEP meetings, collaborating on sev- uh schedule services, and I have been doing periodic visits just to check in, make sure that. Oak Colony is a little different, um, because it's a separate school with its own admin structure, it has its own superintendent, it's actually a school system. So we don't have that same oversight and monitoring that we have with the other high schools. But I did really still feel it was important to have a relationship with Oak Colony, especially around students who may be having struggles and that there's placement change discussions. So before that happens, I really want to be proactive in knowing that these things are, you know, maybe in the discussion of students not being able to get to Oak Colony and not, you know, at the end of the line and we've had no, talk about options. So I've been over, I got to visit classrooms, meet with the special ed staff, cafe, great. Um, so again, you know, just trying to really keep those relationships. So I know there's been a lot of talk around staffing and I just really felt it important to put up our current enrollment and our staffing. So I did a comparison of last year's school year and this year's school year, just to the committee, the, you know, staff in the audience as well as anybody watching from home can really see what our numbers look like. Because it's very difficult to go the day-to-day and walk through buildings and we see a lot of kids and we see staff, but we really, you know, it's a good place to look at where we are. So right now, as far as special education teachers at the elementary school, we have nine. And I itemized out, we have three preschool teachers, a kindergarten teacher, grade one, two, three, four.
That would be last year, yep.
Um, we had sixteen paraprofessionals. Um, we had, for students, we had seventy-seven special education students at Akushna Elementary, again, the breakdown of the grades that those students were in. So for this year, um, we have eight special education teachers, we still have three preschool, one kindergarten, one grade one. We have two teachers that are covering grades two through four, we have not filled the retirement for grade three. Um, because the number of students was, you know, on the lower end, we have not filled that vacancy. And we have one resource teacher, we have fifteen paraprofessionals and our student enrollment is at seventy. And again, you'll see the breakdown, twenty-four of those students being in preschool, six being kindergarten, eleven grade one, seven in grade two, seven in grade three, eleven in grade four. Questions on this slide?
So on average, a special ed teacher had about ten children apiece.
If you table that, I have a slide.
Oh.
Next is the middle school, so again, um, six special education teachers last year. You'll see one for five, six, seven, eight, one resource teacher, one therapeutic learning, ten paraprofessionals and fifty-eight special education students. Um, five in grade five, eleven in grade six, eleven in grade seven, eight, eleven in the resource room and seven in the therapy. This year, we have four special education teachers, we have two teachers covering grades five through eight. We have a vacancy in grade six and eight that were not filled due again to the low number of students in the middle school. We have one resource teacher and one therapeutic classroom teacher, nine paraprofessionals. We have fifty-one students on in special education at the middle school. So we have six students grade five, four in grade six, thirteen in grade seven, twelve in grade eight, ten in the resource room and six in the middle school. Um, tried to get fancy graphics, I'm throwing myself off, this is what happened, I should just go basic. So last year, the student- student teacher ratio at Akushna Elementary was nine to one and at Ford it was ten to one. This year, it's ten point three to one and seventeen point five to one respectively, the elementary and middle. Um, I did want to do a comparison of some other districts, I tried to grab some local districts as well as other districts across the state. Um, and they, as you can see, range anywhere from, you know, eight students all the way up to thirty, so it really is dependent on population. Questions? Sarah, does that answer your question?
Yes, are we looking to increase possibly at Ford Middle School another teacher or a part-timer since that's seventeen point five or do you feel it's sufficient as?
It's something I think we need to look at going forward, I think it was a real shift this year for the teachers to be doing multiple grade levels. Um, the plan was for them to kind of split those four grade levels in half and it it wasn't equitable, so, you know, some of the teachers are doing more than two grade levels. And it's been a conversation that we've had. Um, thankfully, we have amazing paraprofessional support right now, so right now, we're really trying to work as a team and and that special ed department as a whole unit, looking at, you know, how we're we're combating that seventeen point five. I have to also say that the resource room teacher has partnered with the two inclusion teachers and we have been meeting pretty regularly to look at, how can we look at three of them? To see if there's needs that that resource teacher can fulfill when she has small numbers in her class, kids are already in specialties, so.
So with the seventeen point five and the one teacher, that has nothing to do with paraprofessionals?
No, but it's an extra support that those teachers are being able to utilize.
So there are paras in addition?
Yep, I just did the teacher ratio because I wanted to keep that separate.
I just want the public to know that there are more than just one adult with seventeen point five.
Good point.
And if I can just stress, like, as you can see, Mrs. Golem, Mrs. Golem's the bottom, uh, just some samples of caseloads that teachers have. So, for example, in New Bedford, the one teacher to twenty-five to thirty students. Uh, Dartmouth, ten students, uh, Old Rochester, eight to fifteen, so again, it varies, but I don't think we're so far off of any of that. Like, as a matter of fact, we're probably on the low end, mid to low.
And I didn't include high school in that bottom um area district, I just did middle, elementary. So what I've really looked at is, um, obviously from the past few slides, you can see that we have a good amount of resources to the number of students. I think it's the alignment of the resources that may be off. So I've spent the last couple of months really spending time with the special ed teachers to talk about our kids' places appropriately. You know, with the vacant positions not being filled, did that somehow dilute services some students may need services? So what I've asked teachers to do is to look at, you know, where ideally students belong, what level of support do they need? And is there a way that we can do that by um current resource that we have? Because we do have a good amount of teachers for the number of students, so um I have already met with teachers, we have looked at student achievement, their progress and determining, you know, are there kids who we don't feel are getting enough um service and how do we combat that? I've met with the principals, I've met with Dr. Bailey to relook, look at, you know, is this an option? Am I able to do what I like to do and look at restructuring and present that uh that plan to them? If we need to make any changes, that would certainly prop parent meetings, we would have to look at some of the students' IEPs if we wanted replacements, things like that. Follow-up meetings with teachers to update caseloads, because again, if we're shifting, then that might reduce the caseload for some of our inclusion teachers. It may increase the caseload for some of our resource teachers. And of course, along the way, we want to evaluate and make sure that the changes that we're making are actually in the best benefit of students and we've made the right decisions. So my thought on this is, you know, realigning the resources that we have will increase resource room offerings for students in need of those additional support. With the reduction um in resource offerings at the elementary school, we only have one resource classroom. You know, are there kids who maybe should be in that placement and we hadn't had the availability of a second resource classroom? So that's an area that we're looking at. Um, this will also help increase the special ed teacher time in general education classrooms. I'm hearing loud and clear that that was a really useful tool last year and that general ed teachers and special ed really created some nice partnerships um to service all students. So not only special ed kids, but also our general ed kids who may have, you know, learning differences. It'll provide varied options for students needing support in specific subject areas. What I mean by that is if we have a student who's struggling in math and they just need an outside support for that, there'll be opportunity for that to happen. So it wouldn't be an all or nothing. If you're struggling, then you have to have this program all day, every day, it may just be you're struggling in a particular area, how do we support? It'll maximize the number of staff to support a more differentiated level of student support. So again, making sure that our students who are on IEPs are getting that range of support that they need and not a one-size-fish schedule. And it will help to increase the capacity of general education teachers through the more opportunity for co-planning with the special ed, which I'm hearing right now. Um, questions on that? So under student services is also um clinical team, you'll hear as we did tonight, the kind of two schools, one district thought process. What I've started to do is really create a cohesive student services department regardless of which school this team services the district. Um, again, as I mentioned, we now have two school adjustment counselors here at the middle. We have two guidance counselors at the elementary, we have one at the middle, we have a school psychologist for the district, school-based counselor, nurses in our um. Um, so student support services, we offer social skills, individual counseling, social thinking curriculum, in-class social and life skills curriculum and support. And that's a fantastic use of our guidance and our um school adjustment counselor staff. I was able with my schedule this year to take the meetings away from guidance. So they're not responsible to run IEP meetings, five oh four meetings, it's really freed them up to go into classrooms and work in real time with areas that kids struggle. So if somebody's really struggling with some kind of social or life skills in a classroom, that guidance counselor is now fit up to spend time instead in that classroom, work with that general ed. Really model um strategies to really work in real time and and find out the issues of why a particular student is having a difficulty. Um, we're really trying to foster independence and responsibility in kids at all ages. And again, by guidance going in and working on these life skills right in the classrooms, we've really seen that, something that the guidance counselor is very motivated to work. In the middle school, we're looking at college and career readiness. Um, we have the MEFA pathway student futures planning, which the guidance counselor goes into classrooms and actually does this career exploration with graders. Um, they do an invest, interest inventory and they look at where are some areas that they may have strength that we want to maximize and look at career opportunities for them. We're looking at technology skills, that's built in every day, we have our STEM programs, we have technology within the classroom, we have learning labs, computer labs, kids have exposure to that. We do a lot with high school exploration and actually this week had visit to Oak Colony, we have a visit to New Bedford High coming November. So the staff here is really doing a nice job to get practical experience at high schools and not just reading flyer about. We do vision and transition planning through the IEP process and again, our students with disabilities are no different, we want to look at what their interests are, how can we foster that? How can we find them the appropriate high school, really plan college career readiness? And of course, we have our amazing music, art and phys ed program that all kids get to participate in. And I also see that as, you know, some kind of career in college entry plan. You know, if you have a particular skill in art, music, or you're very athletic, then these are things that we should be fostering in kids and we have, luckily, we have programs that allow kids to. So again, some of the changes that um I've made to the department at this point, we have a district-wide clinical team. So again, with that two schools, one district model, the school adjustment counselors, guidance, school-based counselor and the school psychologist, we meet on a regular basis. And we're looking at uh the social, emotional and behavioral needs of the district, looking at kids as a whole, not necessarily looking at it school by school, but as a whole, how can we have a cohesive curriculum that carries us from pre-K to eight? What does that look like in that our supports are actually a team approach and not a school approach? We have a district-wide social, emotional support team and again, school adjustment counselors, guidance, our psychologists, the BCBA, our speech therapists and our occupational therapists. When we're looking at social, emotional needs of kids, we see those manifest in different ways. So our speech therapist partner with this team to look at the social pragmatics, how do kids understand social language? And that's a fantastic use of our speech therapist, occupational therapy, again, that kind of physical dysregulation. We have kids that have um physical needs to be able to move and have breaks throughout the day. OT's been fantastic with helping build that in the classroom strategy, so this team I see just really taking off this year, being able to support all students regardless of their special ed. And again, alignment between the elementary and middle school with student support, social, emotional services, parent engagement, we're just taking that on as a whole team and not. Um, we've been talking a lot about MCAS data, so I really want to throw this slide up. I I think we see where we need to kind of put our focus next year, our math scores, we did have a slight decline in our math scores for our students with disabilities. So that's an area that we'll be digging into with the special ed teachers to look at um student by student, where where seeing that we're falling short. How do we, again, align those resources so that we're targeting the needs of those students who have math support needs? We exceeded expectation in ELA, which is great, we had a plus three point five change, so that's really hopeful, we don't want to lose that momentum. So where we want to focus more on the math, we don't want to not focus on the ELA, because we want to maintain that level of. So I love this graphic, because if we do all of this, this guy's really can support all. Um, when I talk about student services, it's not just students on IEPs, it's not just students in special ed, it's all students. Um, so my plans for this this guy are restructuring special education services in both schools. Special ed and alternative program development, it's an area I want to look at, we do have some alternative program at the middle school, we have none at the elementary. So I really want to look at that. Again, further alignment between elementary and middle, want to bridge that gap between fourth and fifth grade and how do we have the opportunities for fourth and fifth grade teachers to meet, fourth graders to come up in fifth grade? So there'll be more to talk about on that. Then you strengthen social, emotional support for all students. Build capacity in our general education staff around special ed, social, emotional needs and our struggling students. That's a huge focus for me, I think we've done a really great job of making sure our special ed, special education and support staff are very highly um trained in special education. But I hear every day from general ed teachers that they're really looking for tools, that kind of tier one basic support for all kids. So really trying to build capacity with those general education, feel more comfortable. So again, two schools, one district, we get it all aligned, then kids win, whole name of the game and the reason for all he has said, so questions? I know it's a lot.
I just, um, going to your college and career readiness slide and you were talking about um making sure students have an opportunity to visit these schools. I know in the past, we'd actually invited leadership from some of the area schools to come to school committee meetings and present on their programming so that parents at home have a sense of what is um going to be offered or can be offered to their their students, so I would suggest we could organize those. But last year, they were really helpful, really gritty.
We had a great high school night, um, a few weeks ago, we had four area high schools of five. Um, it was a great turnout, many more parents than I thought we would see and real, a lot of excitement in the room. There's there's so many different things that each of the schools offers that I think kids have amazing choices. I was one of those Akushna kids that had to choose my high school. Um, so I think it's a stressor for kids to not know if they're gonna make the right choice. But I think the more we can, you know, point, educate families on what's available. Um, I have done up a kind of special ed cheat sheet, I call it, that I handed out to parents to look at the services that each of the high schools offers for our special ed. It's really um disheartening when a student gets accepted to a school that then we find out. So I'm really trying to start those conversations for families now as they're looking at high school to say, this may not be an option because they don't offer, or this may be a great option.
One other question not related to that, um, there's a school-based counselor noted under your student services, it says child and family services?
She's not an employee of the district, um, she has space in the building to service kids who are on her caseload that may be our students here.
And how often is she in the district?
She's in the district just about every day, um, she goes back and forth between the two schools. Uh, she's available to the students who are on her caseload, but she's also another resource for us. Um, so as our school adjustment counselors and our guidance, those maybe come up against things that maybe they're not versed in, she's a good resource. We've partnered with her on uh several cases recently that have needed more beyond what we can offer. She's a good resource to families if they need outside counseling, be that conduit for the.
So with the goals that you've presented to us, um, with the current budget, do you see, is it realistic in your opinion? Have everything that you'd like to do eventually?
All the realignment, absolutely, absolutely. It's just a matter of, you know, shifting things and and looking at student need, if we can look at student need. If we can look at student need and figure out how to take what we have and cover all that need, I think right now we'll be as we do the work, that may be different. But from what I see and after speaking with the teachers, um I know specifically the elementary, I think we have a really good handle on on that. The middle school, you know, we meet pretty much weekly.
So you see the budget is good enough for right now, in your opinion?
Never good enough. That's my line.
And that's my point. That's my point of bringing it up.
Yeah. And as we go into budget season, you know, that'll be the projecting that we look at.
Okay.
For what the needs are for next year.
So that'll be presented to us by that. You'll have some handle on that? Okay.
I I think I'm just going to jump in because I think that feeds into actually where I'm at. So we we've known that over over time, we've had issues with our curriculum and and we've discussed that in plenty of meetings and we presented that to finance committee last year and we really, a group of, you know, we really sat here and we discussed it on open camera and what we needed for curriculum and we weren't able to fill that position, but we're we're working on it and it's it's strong in Dr. Bailey's goal. So I know we're moving in that direction. So I know when I look at your numbers quickly, um you know, if if you take the amount of teachers we've had from each year and you take the amount of paraprofessionals and then you take the amount of students and you do the math. Um you know, I guess that's what we need to know as a school committee is we have a pool of money. The reality is we have a pool of money. The reality is that if we're going to go to finance committee and say, we need additional staff for X, Y, Z, then we need a plan. It's I'm saying we, but I know I need a plan. I need a plan when I see that finance person or I see that person that doesn't have a child in school anymore and I see someone who's on a on an income-based budget and we're asking for additional funds. That's the reality. So I felt like last year, we had a pretty good plan to go to finance committee and say, listen, this is where we're at with our curriculum. It really needs some work. I know you're new to the district. I think what you just presented us is is more than what I've ever seen being on here and and I appreciate that. It's great data. So what I'd like now is to say, we have a pool of money. If you if you add the teachers, you add the paraprofessionals from last year and you add them from this year and you add the the caseload, the students, the the data. Math, everybody can do the math. So you you start to do the math and you say, okay, then where, we need guidance on what you and what our teachers come together to say, this is where we need our resources. So we can go to town meeting and say, this is what we need. This is why we need it. We need additional funds. Um so that's that's, this is myself speaking, looking at the data. I I need a plan because I say, I know, I know a teacher is a teacher. I I I get that. And I know a para is a wonderful support. I I get that as well. But I know we have so so much money and we have our resources and we have our numbers of students and data's data. So all I'm saying is I really appreciate you being here. Please, you know, work with Dr. Bailey, do the work you can do to present to us and say, what what resources do we need? So that we can go to finance committee and and fight for them when the time comes.
And I think, you know, the reason that I wanted to give you the information that I gave you was really that comparison of not only last year to this year, but looking at the number of staff, the number of
Exactly.
Because I think when we get asked for that, that that's a big impact to the Now, if we were talking about hundreds of kids, small number of teachers, it'd be a very different conversation. And I wanted to be very transparent and put that out this early in the school year, that this is what our, this is what the district Um I'm very confident after working with the teachers as much as I have, just a short amount of time, that the changes need to be You know, we really only have like two options for kids and not everybody fits one of those. So we really need to look at how can we spread these more to relieve some of the teacher caseload, but increase the level of Um once we get that in place and we really do a good analysis of did we get it right? We'll have more information for budget season to look at, you know, if it's not staffing resources that we need.
Right.
What else?
Right, exactly.
Um and then maybe some program support.
Thank you. Does anybody have anything else?
Thank you.
No, thank you very much.
Thank you.
And in terms of the realignment, I just want to stress that it's fluid. So if we have more students um who require services, we have to make adjustments. But at the same time, if we have so much in a pool of money and we don't need as many in that particular area, perhaps we need to put money into a reading specialist or things like that. So we want to be able to give our students what they need. That's why uh we're looking strongly at realigning, you know, that department.
Thank you. All right. So business managers report, Mrs. Flynn, to FY twenty budget update.
Um in your packet, you have our traditional update, the budget. Uh of our major set, of our major budget line. Right now, we can look at salaries um to some extent, tuitions to some extent, and how to district Um salaries, as you all know, as we all know, we don't have settled contracts, so it makes it a bit difficult to be where we're at um based on what we budgeted and the actual amount. So what you have here is all of the the salary replacements, all either the unfilled positions, which really curriculum, um any replacements due to resignations, terminations, retirement, transfers, you know, what that was budgeted for back in January and what it actually turned out to be when we rehired July, August. So you can see the different changes there. The bulk of the salary surplus is coming in from that unfilled direct curriculum position. But as Dr. Bailey mentioned, some of that, some of that funding we will be using for the curriculum consultant. Um and we also have some, uh you can see that we had uh the mentor stipends. That's money that we use, that we get from the Title II A grant, that's a federal grant. And every year, we get a different amount based on, it's determined by the Department of Ed. Um so this year's grant uh is based on the amount of mentors that we need for our new teachers, first year and second year teachers uh versus the amount that we're receiving in the grant is a twenty-five hundred dollar difference so that we have to um we'll have to pay for through the local Um you can see however, that's offset by, you know, when we look at sick leave incentive that paid out in September, um I believe. So we budget for that in January and February and it's based on attendance for the previous school year. So we take a look and see who's eligible in January and February and things change between January, February, and September when it's activated out. You see that we have some small surplus. Um again, you can see that we have a small surplus due to uh resignations, retirements, and transfers. So once we have settled contracts, I'll be able to be more exact. Same thing with high school tuition. Uh it's based on the head count. Right now, we received the October first enrollment from Fairhaven High School and New Bedford High School. Uh so you can see here that we've had some changes and you can see there's a surplus in that, very small. Um not like we've had in previous years, but not like we had last year where we had a very large deficit. Good news. You can see some changes took place. Again, we budget for this in January and February. Um and based on the head count, again, we'll, we can be more exact when we see those invoices because the special ed uh invoices are billed on student services that they that they receive. So we don't, we don't know that exactly until we get their schedules and then these direct services will review that and then we'll take a look. So again, I can update you more precisely once we receive those invoices and that should be within the next month. You can see we had some changes. We had um budgeted for more students at Fairhaven High and we actually have as of October first, some were move outs. Some um some went to school choice. Some actually went, changed their mind and went from Fairhaven High to New Bedford High. Um so there's, you can see all the different, the differences here for Fairhaven and New Bedford. Some are attending Fairhaven High, but they were budgeted at Old Colonia O R R because that's where they said they wanted to go back in, again, in January and February. Some were budgeted at Fairhaven High attending New Bedford High. That's not too difficult because those two tuitions are fairly similar, right around ten thousand dollars each. Some were budgeted at Fairhaven High, but they decided to attend school choice places. Um again, those Fairhaven High, they would have been budgeted about ten thousand. School choice is about five thousand unless there is a special education. Um some were budgeted at Fairhaven High, but since moved out of Akashic. Last year, we had a bunch of kids moving into Akashic. This year, we have some moving out. Um we have some that were that were budgeted at Fairhaven High, but at this point in time, they're not included in the head count. So we don't, they, we don't know um whether they moved out as well. Some of this is information that we get from the guidance counselors, from any of the school staff. Some of it, you know, a lot of times um in the past, we would be, Mrs. Carter formerly would reach out to the school district and find out, okay, did these students move? What's happening with them? And so we'll, we'll be working on that. So you can see some of them are attending New Bedford High, but they weren't budgeted for, or they were attending Fairhaven High, but they weren't budgeted for. Maybe they moved in. And there's various, you know, there's various components to that. So this year, um more so than last, we have a little bit better picture certainly at this time. But again, this is something that changes very rapidly at ten thousand dollars a student. Um you know, any change of students, any small change of students can make a big impact on the budget. So we'll continue to look at that three months. Next thing we take a look at is our out-of-district placements. And you can see here, again, we have a small surplus in the out-of-district placement. Again, last year, we had a very large deficit. Um and you can see the reasons for these changes. And again, this surplus includes using thousand dollars from the special ed revolving account. At this point in time, we may not have to use that. And if we don't, that's good because that's kind of like our special ed savings account. We'd rather not have to use it to balance the budget this year at the time. We had to put it in, um but because of some changes that have taken place, then you can see right now, we're on par for not having to tap into it. But you know, again, something that we're going to monitor. You can see some placement changes after the budget's set. Students, where their placement changed from one out-of-district to another at a different cost level. Um some students were placed out of district after the budget was set. Some students were budgeted for, but they've not attended. There's one student that moved out of a continent. Um you know, very different things. Rate assumptions may differ from the budget. What that means is back in January, we didn't have all of our rates for our out-of-district placement. But when the rates were set over the course of the following months at one out-of-district placement in particular, the uh increase that was put in for this year was quite a bit more than what we had thought. Um we typically budget for about a three to a five percent increase in our out-of-district placements and this one came in much more. So you can see that there. Um so we have some changes in the out-of-district and also um not included here, but since updated, special ed transportation is a small, very small uh surplus that well um due to the, you know, the the changes that place out of district because as go the students, as goes the transfer. You can see this is just a very preliminary look at where we're at with our biggest accounts, but we will continue to take a look at that at each meeting. The next set of documents you have is just the budget summary, the same summary that you receive every month. So you can see where some of the line items are at. Um right now, what I can tell you is we just reviewed the bigger line items. Some of the smaller line items that we're going to be looking at are always our facilities line items and also our legal services line item. So we'll keep a close eye on that. Um does anyone have any questions about the local budget? And then also included is just the the monthly summary of how the school lunch program is doing. It, you know, continues to do, support itself and do well. Um so there's really not much to discuss.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
All right. Uh let's see, we're getting there. Um school committee member reports. Does anyone have anything in particular they'd like to share?
I would just like to thank Kristen for being so quick and Andrew, Oregon, for putting up those plywood for a big toy. We had an inspector come to look at the playground. I mean, I just happened to be there, always here. And um I banged into her and she was letting us know some of the um things that were hazardous and right away, Kristen and Andrew um put up the um plywood which she recommended. That was done over the weekend and Monday. It was there to save you. And we'll be probably at our maintenance subcommittee talking about, you know, fixing up.
We'll be receiving a report from from the inspector within the next couple of weeks. The immediate items, the ones that Andrew addressed right away were the um for what's called level one um items and those needed to be addressed immediately. So there could be some more changes coming. However, those were the ones that were the most serious, shall we say? And like I, and like Sarah said, I can't take credit. Andrew um took care of it right away.
So thank you.
See some areas not in use. We've notified the uh the schools, the principals, and just let them know the areas that are not in use. We will receive a written report that will give us some, the more information. Anyone have anything else? All right. Um communication and information, Dr. Bailey, anything? All right. So we are going to go into executive session to discuss strategy with respect to collective bargaining or litigation. If an open meeting may have a detrimental effect on the bargaining or litigating position of the public body and the chair so declares. So we are going to go into executive session. Our next meeting will be Tuesday, November nineteenth at five thirty. I hope everyone can make it. Um all right. So I will have a motion to go into executive session.
Make a motion.
And a second. And we will not be returning into open meeting. Oh, you want to do a roll call? Ms. Gomes?
Hi.
Ms. Downing?
Yes.
Yes. Okay. Thank you.